Welcome, everyone, to the January 11th City Council Work Session. The items we have today are a lot of committee reports or items of interest and then we'll go into a work session on boards and commissions. So, let's start with George. You have anything you want to share, George, or a report on a committee?
I don't have a committee report, but I would just like to say I attended the -- hadn't been to a meeting for a while, so I attended the Civilian Review Board last night. And handled a case where it was alleged that an officer mistreated somebody at the jail. And it was handled really well. It was not really what happened, but -- and everything was found to be within policy, correctly, I believe, from what I could gather from the proceedings. And it just made me feel good that they're doing a pretty good job, a very thorough review of the cases they select. And I like to check in every once in a while. Also, the only other thing, I've attended several cleanup details, blackberry hacking squad at Civic Stadium, and I'd just like to relay that one of the new workers is a 90-year-old fellow, Ed Pera. You probably saw him on the front page. He was given the Legion of Honor from France. And Ed showed up a few weeks ago and said, "Hey, I heard you guys needed some help." And it's just amazing. We all should want to be like Ed. He's 90 years old and he just did two hours straight. And he bent the tines, which on my hoeing fork, rent them out of shape, ripping up the roots from the blackberries. And those are -- they're pretty heavy gauge, and so I should have brought a photo to show you. But anyway.
The muscle there.
Yeah, that was great. Otherwise, I'd keep that special.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll save the Police Commission report for another time because it's not on the list of these for today, but had the opportunity to attend last night's State of the County address and celebration and thought that they'd done a wonderful job, as one might read in the paper today. I was very impressed. Continue now in the process with Andrea to serve on the JEO Task Force for the ambulance transport issue that we're working diligently on. And I would hope that the committee's going to have recommendations for the full council at some point, I think it's four or five months from now. By the time we hit the summertime, we'll have a recommendation for long-term financing of the ambulance transport fund. One of the pieces that I think both Andrea and I have mentioned previously to the rest of the council is that there was a video that talks about the nature of the problem faced by our firefighters today, becoming kind of a frontline social service agency response. And it deals with how that's taking place down in Los Angeles. So, that's kind of the leading edge of what's going on in the country. It's happening there first, but it's going to happen to us. And I would highly recommend that everybody get the chance to see that video because it's about more than just ambulance response. It's about the fire department's response to social situations and how it affects the healthcare system and the hospitals in the area and so forth. So, highly recommend it.
George?
Well, Travelene County, it's been so long since our last meeting. Our next executive committee meeting is this week, and our next board meeting is, I think, in two weeks. So, and I've since lost the notes from our last week's -- our last month's meeting. However, I do know that with our newly-formed Issues Committee within Travelene County, we're going to be taking up the issue about the possible closure of the Gateway Post Office and discussing whether or not, as a Travelene County, if we're going to take a stand on that, if so, which side. So, we will be discussing that, both, I believe, at the executive committee meeting and the board meeting. I would like to say that at Holt Elementary School, this is on a different topic, Holt Elementary School, 51 percent of the students at Holt are under the free meal programs. They have an organization that's called Harlow Serves. It's a combination of 4J, the parents at Holt School, the Willa Kenzie Evangelical Church, and the North Park Community Church, as well as the Neighborhood Association has got together this year. And they did a food drive and got the names of the kids that wanted to sign up. And what we did is we collected enough food, it was like almost 1,700, 1,800 individual servings of food, but it was enough to package up two big bags of food for these kids that their parents signed them up for this, to get them through the winter break. And then, so one night, we all get, you know, the organization went and picked up the food, and then one night, we all gathered at the North Park Community Church and filled up all these bags. And then the following Saturday, we made deliveries to these families, to these kids that qualify. Not all the families signed up for it, and I don't know exactly how many individual bags of food that were delivered, but I know my wife and I went to three or four different locations with bags of food for these kids. And I think it's a great showing as far as that, what your section of your own little part of the town can do, you know, joining partnerships with, whether it be churches or schools, the city, or a combination of all of them. But, you know, this was an effort that was started by the organization, they call themselves Harlow Serves, to help these kids that weren't going to have meals during the winter break to help them out. And I just think that, you know, perhaps this could be a model for other parts of the community, to help some of these children that need these meals. But it was a real -- we enjoyed it, had a lot of people show up to help, you know, stuff the bags. And I've got to also thank Trader Joe's because they're the ones that supplied the reusable bags, and we were short on some of the supplies. And Trader Joe's was kind enough to make some donations, also to make sure that we evened out the number of meals. So, just a thank you to all the people that were involved in that, in that process, as well as the organizations that I mentioned earlier.
Betty?
Thank you. Thanks to George Brown for mentioning Ed Pera as a volunteer. He's a model volunteer. I know him from the Unitarian Church where he has volunteered for anything that's needed forever and in the community too. He is a retired minister, retired Unitarian minister, as well as a veteran for peace and a veteran who still puts into his uniform.
Which is in common.
And the other things I wanted to talk about, I've read you've all gotten these emails, I think, but no wonder it was a telephone call about trees being cut to protect the sidewalk. Trees are more important than sidewalks. Somebody from Antelope Way sent emails to all of us, I think. And then a man called me, I don't remember his name, I don't even know if I know it, but about cutting a huge tree up by the Campbell Center. And as has been pointed out many times, trees do many things for us, carbon, de-precipation, shade, aesthetic appeal, all sorts of things. And I think that there should be some kind of process you have to go through before you can destroy trees. And the other thing I wanted to bring up, and I've already mentioned this to the manager, but I have heard, and I still don't know if it's true or not, that there's a commercial parking place by the new apartment building between 17th and 18th on Pearl that's going to block the sidewalk. And the neighbors are very upset about this, and on their own behalf and also on behalf of people who go down that sidewalk in wheelchairs, for example, or anybody, it'd be hard to step out into the street right there. There's a bike path and the street, and then there's this new apartment building. And if it's true, I think it should be, if permission has been granted, I think it should be withdrawn. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alan?
Can I talk about the University Area Livability Summit as well? One of the big--
Oh. Sorry.
And now, for another moment of random thoughts.
Then I'll pass. One of the big issues around the university, of course, is the development and the impact that the students have and the university has on those areas, and, which is kind of unique to that area as opposed to the rest of the city. There's kind of, there's a lot of development pressures that are going on there that don't necessarily play out in the rest of the city. So, and a lot of people having concerns about that. And for the first time in my 25 years of living in the university area, instead of people talking about moving into that area, they're talking about moving out of that area because of the things that are happening and going on in terms of impacting their livability and their housing. And so, I called together representatives from each of the five neighborhoods around the university area that I represent in Word Three, that's the West University Neighborhood, Amazon Neighbors, South University Neighbors, Fairmount, and Lower Hill Valley, to come to a summit. We did it at the Law House at the UVO, and the mayor came as well. And we also had a bunch of city staff there to have a conversation. And what it was is that when we're talking about Envision Eugene, I think of that as Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One, setting the urban growth boundary. Phase Two is really about the policies and strategies and things that we're going to do to implement those, the vision in, from Phase One. And so, I wanted to jumpstart that in our neighborhood and get a handle, a better handle, and start people's juices churning about that and moving that forward on the land use and development issues that are in that area. And so, we did the classic worst fears, best outcomes process. We did the worst fears part online, and then I just kind of summarized them, so we didn't spend a lot of time doing that. But we focused in on a lot of the problems that were occurring there and chatted with staff about that, went kind of round the room, and then tried to gear that towards solutions and trying to jumpstart that Phase Two of Envision Eugene. And one of the things that I came out of that was, two things. One is that we don't really necessarily have to think of the city as one big giant thing that everything has to occur at the same way in every place. And so, cookie cutter solutions don't necessarily work for different parts of our city. And this particular part of the city has different constraints that might have different solutions that wouldn't work in other parts. So, we don't need a cookie cutter for that. And so, what people are starting to think about, and I'm thinking about, is a university area overlay zone that has a little bit different rules about stuff than potentially other parts of the city. I know John and the staff have been talking about that and having different kinds of things going on in different parts of the city. So, just kind of wanted to bring that up. And the other thing that's come out of that is the group of people that I invited to this from the neighbors have kind of gone on their own and started talking about the solutions. And we're having an under-meeting in about a week or two to talk about where to go with that and what kind of ideas we move forward. So, anybody having questions about that? That was a really interesting meeting, well, and staff did a great job facilitating it and helping out put it on, so I really appreciate that.
It was a fine ad. It was a good meeting. It was a very good meeting.
Yeah, there was about 30, 40 people there, so it was a, yeah.
Could you tell the rest of us when the next meeting is?
Yeah, sure.
Mail it now.
When we get it scheduled. And I'll send out to the council the notes that came back from that meeting. The Sustainability Commission is one of the reports, the committee reports. We have several new committee members on the Sustainability Commission, so we're getting them up to speed and integrating them into -- they've got some good new members that we appointed. They're going to do really well on the commission. Basically, what the Sustainability Commission's been doing is working, implementing the work plan that we just approved and we just recently modified. So, those items that are on the work plan, more specifically, the ones that are most pressing are, of course, Envision Eugene and also the MX, and also what they call the CLUTAC, which is the Joint Planning Commission, Sustainability Commission, about that transportation and land use nexus and how that relates together. And so, they, about two years ago, established this kind of joint group to talk about those issues where they overlap, so they could have some better communication between our, two of our standing committees, which I think is a good idea. And then finally, on the Sustainability Commission, I just wanted to compliment or give a kudos to both Josh Scov for being the chair over this last year. He's done a great job. And also to Babe O'Sullivan, who's the staff for that, is doing excellent work. So, any questions about Sustainability Commission? You guys just went through their work plans, so you're fairly familiar with what's going on.
Thanks, Alan. Chris?
Probably, I'll give a quick update on the Land Council of Governments. Probably two items that are the main ones right now. First is the Sustainable Cities Grant that was a bit of a challenge before. They have a work plan in place, and I think one of the things that really has worked well for that is assigning Stephanie Jennings to be the staff liaison for that. As you know, she's incredibly competent and does a great job, and so that may have been why she's tapped, but it really gives her a heavy-duty workload. She's also staffing the Housing Policy Board, which means trying to divide her time between some very significant workload is great. And so, I really appreciate the work she's been doing on that. The second item is the search for a new executive director to replace George Kleppel, who is technically already retired but is on contract until next year, is underway. We have basically hired the same firm that brought us our city manager, so we think they probably do a pretty good job.
Yeah.
And they have, there's been a committee put together that is actively working on that, and John is actually on that committee. And they're now in the process of finalizing the promotional materials. As you recall, they put a brochure together, and they get that out, and they do mailings, they do contacts, and so they're on schedule and in the process of having candidates. And we hope to have somebody, or at least some finalists, within the next month or two. And then, I'm sure there will be some sort of a process where as they bring people in, we'll figure out ways to interact with the various public partners who have a stake in ElCOG's operation. So, they really want to make this as open and as inclusive a process because they want ElCOG to be a very open and inclusive organization, and the new director can represent that. Yeah?
Is the ElCOG Board the final decision-making authority for that hire?
Yeah. Yeah.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Andrea?
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. So, I'll start by the most recent because I can't remember that far back since we haven't met for a while. This last week, the mayor, myself, city manager Brenda Wilson, met with officials from the UP rail yard. Brock Nelson brought the environmental guy from Omaha, whose name I can't remember. I'll forward you the minutes and the wrap-up on it so that you'll have the names. And really, they came at the request kind of of a discussion that's been happening around diesel emissions. There's been a concern in some of the larger cities that have large rail yards about train idling. And so, you know, it turns out we really don't have that many trains, and they're polished that are from Union Pacific. There are four other train companies that go through the yard, and then there's the Burlington Line, which is a different company altogether. So, what came out of the meeting is that I think my, Lisa Arkin was there, her and I are going to write a letter to the other railroads and ask them what their policies are around train idling. And they all seem to have a pretty, it's all pretty much the same, that they don't idle over, if the weather is over 40 degrees, because it wastes a lot of diesel fuel, five bucks a hop is what I think they were saying. And so, just to kind of get an idea of how much emissions of that is going into our air here, I'll forward you the notes. I'd like to also thank EPD for arresting the two gentlemen who were the, it sounds like the gang leaders of the gangs that were warring in my neighborhood. I had a little sigh of relief from some of the folks looking at, thinking about, you know, what this all means. And these are not youth, these are adults. So, we're very glad to see them off the street. Hopefully, they didn't get matrixed out too soon. I want to remind folks that the MLK March is this next Monday at 10:00 a.m. at the Science Factory. I hope everybody can attend, they're going to march to the shed. And then I think there's something in the evening also. I haven't gotten that quite on my calendar yet. There's also an immigrant rights meeting on 124 at 1376 Charlton, the church that kind of looks like a, behind the old public library. And basically, it's run by CALSA, and I think that they just want elected officials and leaders of the community there. They're going to be sharing what, I don't know, I'm just sharing that.
First Methodist?
Yeah, First Methodist, thank you. And John, thank you for getting the paperwork to us about the post office. I hope we all take advantage of it and figure out a way to email this gentleman or send him a letter before the 13th. Was that the cutoff date?
So, what I will just interject in there, Andrea, I think what they were asking is if we, as a council, wanted to send a letter in support of keeping that distribution center open. That was the request of us.
Is that the chair?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, that's up to you all, whether you want to do that. I think we could probably get a prototype letter from Springfield because I'm pretty sure they've already done it. It's high on their, on their list, so.
So, if there's no objections, it's like, I don't know if I need to put a motion on the table or if--
Probably will.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I, in support of keeping the post office there, do I, do I see nods from everybody? So, if we could do that, Mayor?
So, you want to put an official motion on the table?
Do a motion.
Okay. I move to have staff draft or get a letter from, draft a letter in support of keeping the post office open for the council to sign and mail to the--
It has to be in tomorrow, so you will have to give your, if you give your approval, we'll sign it on behalf of the council, but it has to be in by tomorrow, I believe.
We can either have George sign it if you want something like that, or the mayor to sign it.
However it works, just I think we need to show support of keeping those jobs here.
A second motion.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded a discussion. All those in favor, please indicate. Two, four, five, six, seven, eight. Everybody's in favor, none in opposition, so, okay.
And so, my council assignment is the Human Services Commission, and we did meet last month, and we are going to be having a summit, and there's a subcommittee meeting on that. It almost feels like we're working, like, there's a lot of little groups going on around--
Or big ones.
Big ones. There's three, actually. So, there's the one that the mayor's put together, there's our little subcommittee that we had from councilors, and then there's, this is one that they wanted to present to the community, basically, what all the social services do, kind of an education piece, is what I think it is. Correct me if I'm wrong. And so, we're trying to get, I think the date is like in the spring sometime. And then, other than that, I think there's just a lot of concern for funding of all the services that we do and also plenty of people else.
I would just add to that, since I'm on that committee too, that I think the impetus of this one is to give people a realistic picture of what social services are facing in our community, and then ask questions of the participants about how they want to move forward on those things. And they'll use the information from the subcommittee and from other places. That's all I have. Okay. Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I attended Monday's meeting partly via phone. And it was interesting. I left before, about halfway through the public forum, so I didn't catch the second part of the meeting. My son was married on Monday.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
They're off for a one-year honeymoon in Brazil. It's actually not a honeymoon, their, his wife has a Fulbright Scholarship, so they're going to be studying in Brazil, finishing their PhDs down there. Very proud. And our other son was here, who's in the, he's a graduate student at Arizona. So, they're all gone now. They left yesterday. So, our daughter is in town, so just that parental pride a little bit, had to get that in. Congratulations, I believe, to Alicia Hayes, who's kind of been consolidated in a number of positions of the county. I was talking to Steve Manella this morning. Everybody seems pretty excited about that, and I think reason for excitement. Alicia's been a great service to the community and brings a great deal of background, so if anybody can pass that congratulations along, I'd appreciate it. The Human Rights Commission, HRC, received a commendation at the State of the City address, which was very well appreciated, for the listening project that they underwent. It's, came from the manager and the manager's office, and a very, very broad listening project that really set the tone and direction for the Human Rights Commission for, I believe, for years to come. And the commendation was well received. Tony Gatzu, who is the chair of the commission, and Ken Newbeck were very deeply involved in that. I spent a lot, a lot of time on that. So, thanks to them, and thank you, Mayor, for putting that out of the State of the City. Just one other thing I wanted to mention, councillor polling, you were talking about the food drive that you did with the Hollow Neighbors, and I just wanted to say thank you to you personally, in public and in this forum, for all of the work that you and Glenda have done in this community for years and years and years. Sometimes it's not brought to people's attention how much you guys do. I've seen you guys that worked with the Food for Lane County, I've seen you doing this project that you're talking about right here. And Glenda, we all know for years, has been the lucky glass. And you guys are with the, on their board, as board chair recently, maybe still board chair. But the depth of service that your family has given to this community, George, it really echoes around, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows how much you guys do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I wanted to say thank you. Don't have to repeat anything that was said at the State of the City, but I do want to say thank you to the staff for the huge effort that was put into pulling that off. We had a lot of different things to deal with, and so I just want to express my appreciation. I thought it went very smoothly, given everything we were, we were trying to manage. So, thank you very, very much for all of that. And on my, I'm just going to say a little bit, and Alan can help me with this, about the MPC report. So, MPC passed the regional transportation plan with some minor updates, had very few changes at this part, because the in-depth approach to our transportation planning is happening within the local transportation system planning, and that'll be fed into the regional transportation plan later on as it's done. Because you know, we didn't just choose to do a little planning update with Envision Eugene, we chose to take on all of our planning. So, that's all being sort of fed through the process, and just wanted to bring that to your attention. I think everybody knows this, but it bears repeating, it kind of doesn't matter what's on the list because there's no money.
Reality check.
In Spanish, es un tengo dinero.
But I would also say that what we learned around rail and everything else is you better have your plan in place because when something comes, you want to be ready, ready to go. So, that's kind of the good and the bad, bad news of where we are. And Alan, you want to add to that?
I just wanted to add to you just one is the context of, there's the regional plan, which the feds require us, and the local plan, which is our trans plan. And they're supposed to be consistent. So, the regional plan was approved without hardly any changes to it.
Right.
In the thought that when we do our local plan--
Which is where the planning really takes place.
Which is really, because it's a bottom-up plan.
Right.
So, all the local plans get fed into, in this technical term, a schmushing, to get to the RTP, which is the regional plan. And so, when those get updated, then we'll make them consistent later. So, so there wasn't very many things that were different at all in the RTP this year. The MTP, though, has, all of our projects are exactly the same, so nothing changed there. There were a couple of, six other projects that were LTD and ODOT-related, mostly around buses, replacement of buses for some of the funding that they got for that. But other than that, the MTP is pretty much, from our perspective, is pretty much the same, and from overall perspective, pretty much the same as it was before, so it wasn't very many changes to it.
And then, in terms of your direction to us, I mean, the Belt Line still remains our, at the top of the list for us. And then, did you have a question, Mayor?
I did. I was just wondering about MPC's implications and the MPC impact, or what you'll do with regard to the transfer station grant that was in the news recently and was spoken about, the rail transfer grant that--
Oh, you mean the one that's related to the McDougal Brokers?
The one that has the--
I think we have--
Has a tangential impact. I suppose, pardon--
I think we haven't discussed that yet.
Yeah, we haven't even talked about that, so.
But we need tomorrow.
Do you know whether that land in your, in MPC's lap in any form in the future?
I don't know. We can talk about it tomorrow. I don't, I don't really know that.
I kind of doubted it when I was reading--
Because it's judicial right now. It's before, but--
Right. And it's also a different kind of grant than we would typically look at at MPC.
Okay.
It doesn't come through that traditional transportation--
But we can bring it up tomorrow to see if there's any implications for us.
My concern is that we don't end up with a transfer station in Roseburg rather than in our area, but--
Right. Might be worth a talk.
Well, you saw, there was an, the article in Registered Guards says there may be some things wrong with it, but you don't need to throw the baby out with the bathwater.
That's kind of what I'm asking.
So, that's kind of the conversation.
Yeah, might be worth some conversation.
That's what I'm asking.
That's also different from the new rail line that came in from Coos Bay, which ends up at Ari Rail Yard here.
So, Betty, you had some--
Well, for the moment, yeah.
Betty?
Yes, I wanted to say something else. I did attend the meeting of the, the board meeting of the National League of Cities, and we talked about, when you mentioned things that won't get done, we think there won't be much that will be done with Congress this year, but we talked about what we should keep working on and hoping that would get done. Since there are no, are not going to be any specific projects, any, but we decided that we should work mainly on things that affect all cities, large and small, such as getting rid of unfunded mandates. And so, of course, CDBG is, things like that are really important to all cities, not just, not just to a specific city. And immigration came up, and there was a discussion about whether we should do any, whether we should continue to work on immigration reform because it is not going to happen this year. But the prevailing opinion seemed to be that you keep bringing it up because eventually it has to happen, and that we just keep, some things we should just keep-- it has to happen, and that we just keep, some things we should just keep in front of Congress, we should ask our lobbyists to keep them aware of, whether it's going to happen right now or not. Thank you.
So the other things that I wanted to mention is, within MPC, we're still doing the work on the greenhouse gas planning, and staff has been working with John Friganesi, a well, very well-known planner, on scoping projects for land and transportation scenarios, so that's, that's been going on.
And that also interfaces with what Chris was talking about, because they overlap really nicely, and there's some great synergy that the two grants actually part, overlap a tiny bit, in that they both will look at the same data, but they will do separate things, so they're not redundant, but they'll use the same data, so there's some good synergy that we'll be able to use both of those two funding pots to be able to do the, do the piece of work, that's kind of the data for, for both of them.
And move everything along faster.
Right, and, yeah, right, and the synergy, so there's more people working on the same data set for the two different parts of that we're working on.
And then I went to a regional solutions meeting, because I'm on that committee, and as you, I think everybody around this table probably knows, that there's a really, a lot of conversation going on now, which we haven't had a real discussion at the council table about yet, about whether some of our industrial property needs will be taken care of by, by Goshen area, so that's a conversation we need to be part of, too, so we'll see what comes of that. And that doesn't mean all of ours, it just means it is a place where you could put a lot of the regional, perhaps put a lot of the regional industrial property needs, I don't know the answer to that. The, in terms of what Andrea said, UP says that they have moved in a very short period of time from having emissions reduction devices on their trains, from just a few years ago, 35 percent, to now they're up to 75 percent, and they're not, and they're doing it themselves without the state having to pay for any of it, because it's such a cost-reduction thing for them in terms of fuel, that it makes really good sense for them, so, some people were asking what role should the state have in that, and their answer is, well, you don't need to, because we are self-motivated to do this, and so I think we should just all say thank you and keep going, and their, their aim is 100 percent, so-
And they're saying private dollars-
Private dollars.
To let us know that they are taking care of it themselves, and they don't want the impression that they're not, they don't want to give the impression that they're waiting for the state to mandate them, that they're doing this on their own, because it is the right thing to do.
And I think they also want to say that they believe they've made, had a big shift in how, at least their railroad responds to the communities that they're in, that they are trying to be open and reachable, so in fact, came all the way across the country to have this discussion.
And I think Brock Nelson has done a fabulous job of being the community liaison for our community.
So, I'm going to ask the city manager if he has anything to say, and I'm hoping that he will fill us, you know, he's on this, he's chairing this energy committee for the, for the governor, which is a really important committee, and I think we'd all like to hear a little about it, if he can fill us in a little bit on what he's doing.
I can tell you a little bit, there's probably a couple of things, there's a, there's a larger committee, but there's several design teams within that committee that really are talking about a variety of parts of energy, and the one that I'm chairing really ties into transportation, and transportation's impact on energy, and really, the whole goal is, is how do you reduce energy consumption, is really the, the piece of that, and the benefits that come along with that are a myriad of things, everything from economic benefits to businesses, meaning that if you need to spend less money on your energy, you're actually saving money, there's environmental benefits that come along with that, greenhouse gas is, is one of those, there's hopefully economic development benefit, as energy technologies, industry develops, that some of those could come into Oregon and could help us also from an economic development standpoint, there's energy independence, so there's a lot of really, I think, benefits that come out of that. Group I'm particularly involved in has to do with how do we, how does transportation intersect with that, a lot having to do with technology, some having to do with land use, but it's actually a pretty interesting group of people, meeting some interesting folks from the public and private side that are dealing with that, and I'll have more as we kind of move through it, it's a pretty ambitious schedule, so as we move into the spring, there'll be some of the actual products starting to come out of the larger group, but it's a, it's just, it's an interesting group, and I'm happy to be a part of that, so, but there'll be more coming on that, for sure. Couple of things I would like to mention, in addition, Andrew, you mentioned a couple of Martin Luther King Junior Day events, there are a couple of others, on Sunday, from 5:00 to 7:30 in the evening at the Hilton, there's a sponsor, event sponsored by Honey, and I have to admit, I'm not sure what that acronym stands for.
Honoring our-
F-N-A?
It.
Hilton.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure, but, I must, yeah, yeah. And then, of course, you mentioned the March, that's Monday, also on Monday at 5:30, there's a community celebration at the Hall Center for the Performing Arts, on Monday at 6:00 PM, the University of Oregon, Dr. Joseph White, who's an educator and godfather of black psychology, is going to be at the EMU Ballroom making a presentation, and then Springfield's March is on Monday from 1:30 to 4:00 also. And then lastly, I'd just like to say some thanks to, one, just our staff in general, this last year's been sort of this really interesting balance of lots of challenges, but I think they have just done just yeoman's work, and, and I've mentioned this before, I've been in several cities, and we by far have, across the board, a higher talented staff than you'll find in most communities, and I particularly just want to point out our department directors, these are, you know, the two chiefs, Pete and Randy, and Sarah and Glenn, and Christie, Kurt and Renee, again, they're definitely big-league players, and we're going to have another challenging year, as you know, but one of the things that I think we've continued to do well is not focus in on ourselves, but we continually focus out into the community as an organization, and the department directors are the ones that lead that effort, and, and I think you can see the results, even in these tough times, whether it's downtown, or roads, or libraries, and what the police department has gone through, and mergers, and all those kinds of things, so I'd just like to recognize them for really the big-league players that they are, it makes my job infinitely easier, I can kind of sleep well at night, and just knowing that, so, that's all I have.
I think we had our conversation at the State of the City and talked about all the things that, in spite of the hard times, that we've been able to get done as a whole, it, a lot of it rests right with the talent of our, of our staff, so-
Yeah, and they really are, very good.
Yeah. There was a, I had one other thing that I wanted to, whatever it was, it just went, came and went, oh yes, I was going to say that I had a chance just a few days ago to go look at the Taco Time Building and the Public Works Building, I said a little something before the meeting tonight, but I wanted to say it today, I wanted to say it here publicly, it's pretty amazing, both of those projects are underway, so the Taco Time Building is going to have apartments and retail, it's pretty, they had to do an incredible amount of cleaning the space out, because it was a lot of stuff in there, but, a warren of stuff in there, it's going to make some really nice apartments, really nice apartments, and, and then the funnest part, which I, I know they don't think it makes economic sense now, but I have to say, when you see that old vault door, it is a piece of, of real craftsmanship and work, and it ought to be somehow make, part of something for the community, I mean, I could see having a Ratskeller bar, you know, thing down there for people to go, go bar or something, but it's, it's really cool, and, and then I was over at the Public Works Building, and they're in the, the old Public Works Building, which they are also making into apartments, and they're going to be, what do you call the little ones that everything's in the same room, the-
Studio.
Studio.
The ground floor's going to be studio apartments in that, and I, I guess I learned, I didn't know that in its past early life, that building was a bordello, but you find out interesting things.
And a studio apartment.
So it's good, whole different kind of public works.
By the hour. I don't think I know what to say.
Anyway.
You said it's a warren.
At any rate, both of those things happening right now, in addition to the LCC and, and Rob Bennett's project, and all the things that are going on downtown, it's very, it's very heartening, and, and those are coming on really fast, so we're going to see that happening very quickly, that's fine.
Do you have a better name than Taco Time Building?
Well, it was the old bank before, I don't think it's got a new name yet, we'll, we'll be able to-
A new, sooner-
Is it not the oldest building in town, perhaps, on that, or the oldest brick building in town?
I don't, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't know either.
It was the first brick-
It's going to look really good.
Not much of the original building.
It's going to be very handsome.
Not much of the building left.
Mm-mm, mm-mm, it's got the ball, because it couldn't move it. All right, okay.
There's a hall in the library at Bethel.
The children would-
Mm-hmm. All right, we're going to move on to our second item, that was a lot of interesting things happening, so boards and commissions?
I'll turn over to Kelly.
Hi, Kelly.
I was thinking, I was going to say Warren.
Warren, I kind of liked that.
And then I said Blue Hill.
That's the other building.
Good afternoon, Mayor Thursday and Ms. Osars, today's work session is simply an opportunity for you to discuss how the boards and commissions recruitment and selection process has been working for you. One of your best outcomes is to ensure that the makeup of your advisory groups represents the diversity of the community, both in general demographics and in geographic and neighborhood representation. So we're here today to solicit your feedback on the proposed boards and commissions annual recruitment schedule, which is going to kick off next week, and to hear any thoughts or ideas you might have to make the recruitment, interview, and appointment process a success, both for you and for the applicants. Also briefly noted in the AIS's information about the role of advisory groups in making recommendations to the council, and an update on recording and webcasting boards and commissions meetings, Kelly and I are happy to answer any questions you have related to these two aspects of the boards and commissions process as well. And that, that is it, we're just going to open it up to questions or comments.
Thank you, Beth. Okay, so Mike, you want to start us off here?
I appreciate the tone with which the manager brought a new way of kind of working on things, some number of years ago, to the council, with the Bob, you know, Bob's look at our, our worst fears or our best outcomes, and I think that's a wonderful way for us to look at this and say, how can we improve on and make a, make our boards and commissions realize our best outcomes, and create a more helpful set of those for our deliberations on council, but I have to say, with a couple of them, we've realized my worst fears. The Budget Committee, for one, has, over the last couple of years, represented only a part of our community. There is no one who lives north of the river or west of the river on our Budget Committee, and I find that tragic. I don't think that, we have a very well-represented geographically set of opinions in what can arguably be one of the more important committees that serve the council and the city. So, I'd like to see us do a better job of recruiting, I know that, I went about the process of trying to recruit several people in the last year's process, I know we've had a number of potential folks in wards four, certainly in this last cycle, would come forward and have the chance to, to be chosen, I don't, I'm not, I welcome my colleagues to come up with other ideas to enhance our recruiting process, so that we, we stand a better chance of getting a much more diverse set of opinions and points of view on our Budget Committee. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, and thank you, councillor Clark, that was well stated, I think if you, if you look at the geographic diversity, wards one, four, five, excuse me, wards four, five, six, and eight are pretty underrepresented on the committees, and there are reasons for that, you know, there are distinct reasons, and I think it's up to us, perhaps a little bit as councillors, to make sure that we're recruiting the right people who are going to do the, go through the process in the correct way, so, thanks to point that out, Mike.
Okay, Alan, and then Betty, and then Andrea.
Well, I think that's too obvious that they're underrepresented, but I, I think there are reasons behind that, and part of it, you know, you have, if, if, we don't, what piece of information we don't have here is how many people applied from each of these different places.
We had those.
And, and my experience over the last several years has been that, that the wards that have the most representation on the committees have also the most number of people that apply, and, and, and there's some good reasons why some of the other wards don't have as many people apply, there's a lot of demographic reasons about where people are in terms of their lives, and, you know, younger folks with three kids and two jobs aren't going to be applying too much for committees that are busy raising their families and doing their work, so there's a whole bunch of reasons that make it kind of complicated, it's not a simple, simple explanation behind the numbers and the diversity of the committees, but.
Okay, Betty?
I wanted to say, I don't think geography matters, I don't think it matters where you live, whether you, I think we're all a part of the same city, I think we all care about all parts of the city, and I don't think it matters where you live, but there probably are, I noticed also that in the wards that are underrepresented, usually the council seats are uncontested, so maybe there aren't as many people, not one or two, but some of them, and like Mike's, for example-
She was talking to me.
-ever been, I guess, so maybe there just aren't that many people who are interested in government, or maybe they don't have the time, there are, there are times in your life when you have time for extra things besides making a living, and there are times when you don't.
Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor, well, I'm happy to say that I see my ward has come up a little bit in numbers since I've been seated, very glad for that, I know that I do have several younger people who were, who've taken the step with a lot of encouragement to participate, and telling, you know, trying to invite them in, and I think that's part of our roles as councillors, I am concerned about the geographic makeup, I will admit that, I think that, that there are challenges for people to volunteer, bottom line, I think that regardless of, I mean, I just know my own self, how, how challenging it is to put yourself out there originally, but I just would encourage the community who's listening, that it really is timeless, they're involved, and I would encourage people, if they're interested, to apply. I do like, I was just, I just had one little question about this, so this is the 2011 roster, we just went through redistricting, does this, does this count? Is this included, because, you know, I took over some of Pat's area, did we, did we just generate these?
I got a big chunk of the neighborhood.
So, this would be with the current, with your current wards? Okay.
I only have four.
I was wondering if I took one or two. That's all, Mayor, thank you.
Kelly?
One of the challenges we face as staff, you face as council, of course, is getting people to apply, because you work with the pool you have, but I, I feel as over the last couple of years, the pool has continued to expand, what would probably be really helpful is to think about additional ways for each of you to be persuasive out there in the community, so when we hear things like more geographic representation would be worth looking at, or even just more diversity in terms of age or backgrounds, we know that for a lot of people who apply for boards and commissions, they hear about it from other people who already are in boards and commissions, they hear about it from city councillors, they hear about it from people who've been active in other ways in the community, and so, we just welcome your ideas about ways we can amplify that work, and also, you can help us with that, because you're our best ambassadors, I think, you know, if you're out there giving applications to potential applicants, boards and commissions, I think that's really powerful.
Chris?
Yeah, one of the interesting things about data is, when you have a certain kind of data, and you don't have other kinds of data, you start filling in the blanks with your own answers, and I don't know why you have more people applying than others, I really don't, I, I know I can look at the fact that when they say, what is the method that you heard about this, the vast majority, 63 out of, out of this number, said they got it by word of mouth, so that means obviously somebody who's engaged is talking to somebody else who they want to be engaged, and that's how that kind of thing works, and so, there is that kind of enthusiasm that builds, but why one ward would have more than another, we can all sit around here and guess, but unless we ask, we don't really know for sure, is it a good thing or a bad thing? know for sure. Is it a good thing or a bad thing? I also don't know for sure, although I do think that geographic representation should, should somehow be a factor. Because it would be nice if you can get as much diversity as you can in a variety of ways. And so I need to take that to heart myself. And I look at my ward and see that's the least represented. But I'm not necessarily knowing that's a good thing or a bad thing from the standpoint of my ward unless I know why. It reminds me of the time when we were nominating folks to a committee and we each had to come up with like five or six names. And I decided I would break the usual tradition and I would randomly contact six people from the phone book who lived in my area and say, we're recruiting for a committee. It's your chance to be a participant in city government, to be involved. I'm calling you randomly to see if you would like to become a part of the city. And, and I think I called fifteen or sixteen people trying to get five or six. And every single one of them had to wash their hair that night. They couldn't do it. And it was a very interesting commentary to me on what does it take to get somebody involved. And people, and I guess the conclusion I drew from that was, if I'm not really feeling the need to be involved, why are you trying to make me get involved? People don't just get involved for no reason. People get involved because they have a reason. And what that reason is, or very happy. It's like those little cards in the restaurant. Who fills out those little cards in the restaurant? Just average folks, people who are either very happy or very sad. So I'm thinking our participation is a reflection of our interest in that. And maybe word of mouth has a piece of that. So I'm talking around it, but I'm talking around it to try to say, I don't have any answers. I don't know whether this is good or bad. But it does say, if there's some way we can generate more interest in, in the wards without having to create controversy in order to do it, we should, we should explore how that could be done.
George Brown?
Yeah, I, I think that I agree with a lot of things that Chris just said. You know, I, and I have a feeling that we, Alan's correct, we don't have the statistic of like, it would be interesting to know last year where all the applicants, which wards they were in, which ones were chosen. I mean, I don't know if we need to go that deep into this. I don't know if that would be a prudent use of staff time. But just my recollection is that these numbers here reflect roughly the applicants from, I mean, we had more applicants from wards one, two, and three, for whatever reason. And I, so naturally they're, they're more heavily represented in these totals. There's certainly no plot, nefarious plot by the councilors from wards one, two, and three to exclude applicants from the other wards. Maybe even if that was happening, it would, that's only three out of eight. We don't, you know, it's, I personally, I, I try not to look at the ward numbers, where the person's from. And, and sometimes I peek and cheat anyway. But I try not to because I want, I wait till I read the material that they've filled out. And then, of course, attend the interviews and, you know, and listen to them in person. And I just try to pick the, what I think is the best person of that, of that pool of the applicants, without even, even thinking what ward they're from. Because I don't see any advantage to trying to say, okay, now we want everyone to be from ward one, you know. No, I want, I want people to be from different wards. But if they don't show up, for instance, I want, I want to have, you know, ideally, we would have rough gender equity here, too. But look at the planning commission, and we don't. It's seven males and no females. So, but if the women don't apply for the planning commission, if we don't have, you know, an equal number of applicants, we're not gonna have an equal number of, of members on the commission, too. So...
I think we went through that.
Yeah. I, you know, I, I don't know what the solution here is. But I just, I try to find the best person for, you know, to serve on the board. Thanks.
So, you know, I, the only thing that I think is often, we have a conversation about geographic diversity. And I think geographic diversity is important. But I also think the other kinds of diversity are just as, are just as important. And there's a whole variety of them. And you have to try to fill at least portions of those kind of varieties in many ways. And so it's, it's a, it's a puzzle to try to, to figure out. I also think that sometimes we speak about different parts of the community as having only one kind of perspective. And almost every point of the community has a variety of perspectives from that part of the community. And even as I look on this, and I see that there seems to be pretty good participation from the Cal Young neighborhood. And, and I see, you know, that, I've noticed we have growing participation from the Train Song area. So there's, there's gives and takes. I think it's something worth to keep working on. But I sometimes think we, we try to box it in too much. And there's a lot of ways that we have to try to get diversity and participation from people for many different, many different reasons. Mike, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. One, it's not that it would be nice or that we shouldn't do it. It's that we have to do it. It's a part of our diversity action plan that we will have geographic diversity on our boards and commissions. It's not optional. It's a requirement. We've approved that. So I'd like to see us actually be successful at doing it. When it comes to the Budget Committee and the, what I presented there, it isn't a shortage of applicants. We've had them. It's a decision-making process that the council's gone through in previous years. And the last person that came to the Budget Committee who is very qualified and has done frankly, a wonderful job. The last person that we appointed was a choice between someone from Ward Four and someone from Ward Three. And we chose someone from Ward Three who's done a fantastic job. So we did a good job of picking someone who, with the qualities and the capacity to do a good job on Budget Committee. But one of the other decision-making points is, in fact, values that people bring to the table and how they represent people who live in their part of town, and what should be the spending priorities of our city. And so again, I'm saying, it's, it's not just that it would be nice. It's that we have an obligation to do it. And I'd like to see us build in a capacity with our process to be more effective. I think we've done a good job with word of mouth with those that do participate. I think we've, we've done our recruitment in a similar sort of way to the ways we've done it. And we've, staff's done a fantastic job of reaching out in new ways. But I'd like us to look for new ones. Perhaps there are ways that folks in some part of town live their lives where they're not coming into contact with any of the ways that we've done recruitment in the past. Perhaps through the school system and their newsletters, or through the, you know, through other organizations, through other community organizations, whether it be Rotary, or whether it be whatever other kind of community organization, perhaps there could be announcements created through those pre-existing networks that could, that could bring more folks out. Certainly, it's up to councilors to do more as well, and I have. But I'd like to see us build a process where we're communicating the option in new ways. And one of the ways, I don't speak for everybody on this, but for myself, is to have, have much more information about deadlines and, and the calendar of this process. Because we changed it. And I honestly, last year, it snuck up on me a little bit. So if you can communicate with us frequently about, hey, deadline's coming up for application. Here's when it is. Here's where it is. Here's what people have to do. It's open during this window. That will be very helpful to me. Thank you.
So if I'm reading this right, I'll call you Alan right after this. So if I'm reading this right, the lower, higher participa, highest participation from area looks like friendly. And then right under that is Cal Young. And right under that is Crest, Southeast.
New Cal Young or old Cal Young?
Cal Young's got nine.
That's the old.
Am I not looking at the, it says 2011 boards and commissions demographics and its neighborhood and by organization. And Cal Young has nine. And Churchill has six. And Crest?
No, down below the...
Am I not reading that correctly?
You're right.
Yeah.
No, you're right.
That's right.
And so it looks to me like the low, low participants are, are your Downtown Neighborhood Association. It looks like low participants are maybe Far West Neighborhood, and Jefferson West Side, and Laurel Hill. So those look like the low participants to me.
Soon.
Neighborhood associations are differently sized.
ABC is above the cities.
It's not per capita here.
Wow. We can't do a debate, Alan, can we? Yeah. But it sounds good.
By neighborhood, if you were looking at it that way, instead of by ward, it creates a little different picture.
Neighborhoods are very differently sized. Cal Young is huge. So proportionally, it's not apples or oranges.
So, but, but I would say, it gives you a fair notion of different parts of the community and the representation. And it shows where, in the ten, eight, nine category, where they are. And where they least are, which is Laurel Hill, and Jefferson, and Train Song, and West University, those areas.
It's a triangle. It's that big.
It's more data. It's hard to understand.
Yeah. I don't know. It's, what is what it is?
Did you have?
I've got, Pat, I guess you're next.
Okay, thanks.
And then Andrew.
Ever so briefly, you know, I, I look at the number of participants from ABC, which is a very big neighborhood. I mean, geographically, it's, it is equivalent to most three or four other neighborhoods combined, where we have seven. But, you know, I take that as a challenge to me personally. I think that if we're gonna get more people from ABC, then the one cheerleader to bring people on the boards and commissions is going to happen to me. And I, I look at Ward Eight, for instance, where you have, take away the Human Rights Commission, you have two, two out of eighty-two positions are from Ward Eight. That's, that's, you know, that's tiny. I've looked at it also in terms of house districts, which is a little bit more of an evenly dispersed. And House District fourteen, which goes a little bit of several different wards. When I looked, had, of the three house districts in Eugene, had, I think, three representatives from House District fourteen, which goes beyond the limits of the city. But, so I think getting geographic diversity for me is, is getting people to not wash their hair. Or I have a bald neighbor, maybe he could.
How do you get people engaged?
Yeah. And I think, I think as a counselor, that I probably, it falls on my shoulders to do so.
Agreed.
Right. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Pat, for that, because I do believe that's true. I mean, I feel pretty, you know, that there's more involvement from my ward. But Kelly, you wanted to know about the process. And so for me, the process works. I appreciate the work you guys do around this. I know it's like herding cats, trying to get us all our calendars and then all the applicants. I would, you know, a little bit more reminding for us would be good. So, you know, it works for me. The only thing I found kind of interesting, interesting with the comparisons, in Salem, I know we're all committed as a, as a council to do the interviews. But in Salem, they have a subcommittee, the mayor plus two councilors. And I don't know if that's something we'd want to explore, if everybody still, you know, want to do this as a group. And I do like the way that we've kind of moved it all to like, you know, like narrowing it down so that there's not all these random dates of doing different interviews for different, for different boards and commissions. So I do appreciate it. Appreciate the work you guys do.
I've got Alan and then George Poling. Alan?
So as Chris said, recruiting's tough. I've done it many times and had people go, are you kidding?
Got them right up to there.
Yeah, you get them right there. And then they say, well, how many hours is it? And you go, okay. You know, the geography question's an interesting one. We're not suggesting quotas. The only one where we actually have geography involved in the selection is the Sustainability Commission, where we each appoint one person. And then there's a bunch of at-large appointed. That works okay. We used to do that a lot more, and for different reasons, we don't do that anymore. I remember when I came on the Budget Committee, I was the first person to be appointed at large. They were all appointed before. And the reason they changed it is because it didn't work so well. And when you look at the, when you look at the neighborhoods and their representation versus the wards, you get this really mixed-up kind of picture. Because other, some neighborhoods are well-represented, and it doesn't reflect it in the wards. And neighborhoods are from, you know, really small to gigantic. So it's a difficult thing to look at. But there's other kinds of diversity that struck out to me as well that we need to work on. Planning Commission, seven males, zero females. That's the only one that has this really...
At least two.
Obvious, obvious one, right. Although overall, you know, we're pretty close. But then another one that's interesting to me is that the age group diversity, in the nineteen to twenty-five group, you have four. And then there's, and then in the sixty-five and older, it's, we've got six. So we don't get the youth. And we don't get the seniors. We get everybody else in the middle, which makes sense, too, because you're either busy or, or you don't want to anymore. And then when we looked at ethnicity, you know, we have three African-American, one Native American, zero Asian, zero Middle Eastern, five Hispanic. You know, and most of the folks are white European Americans. Doesn't look like we're doing a very good job of getting diversity from that, from ethnicity perspective as well. With regard to the process, I think overall, it works for me. I like the change that we made where people do a statement at the beginning. I think they, we should prepare them a little bit more and say, here's exactly what you should be, here's the questions that you should be answering when you do that statement. Some people do it really well, and other people look like deer in the headlights when we ask them what they wanted, that they wanted to make their statement. So I think they could use a little coaching there. And then the other part that doesn't work really well for me is the, the life experiences. The format that we use doesn't extract that information very well for me. I can't really see it. And sometimes I'm wondering, you know, what, maybe there's a different way of doing that so that, that we can get their life experiences that are relevant to being on a boards and commission in a, in a different format.
Interesting.
I mean, I don't want, you know, resumes, because that's, you know, professionals do resumes. Not everybody's professional. But maybe there's a different way of saying, you know, here's the way, here's the things that you've done in the community and in the world.
I've got, George Poling next.
Excited?
George, Mike, Betty, Andrea.
Write it down so you don't forget.
You think she's gonna forget?
They look like she's gonna.
I, I too think that we need to come up with a better, better way of doing the recruitment. I mean, I know at every neighborhood association, Cal Young and the Harlow, I always bring that up. We need people to get involved. And for some reason, it just seems like that, for whatever reasons, I don't know, people aren't taking up that challenge, I guess. So I think there's, we need to do something to do a better outreach. And then back to our apples and oranges. Alan, you're bringing up the, the diversity. Well, if you look at that column, one-third of the people didn't, didn't respond to their ethnicity question. So that, all those numbers are really skewed. And then if you look on the front of that page, if you add up the totals of people on boards and commissions from wards four and five, it's eighteen. But if you go on the backside of that, where it's divided up in the neighborhoods, it's only thirteen. So, you know, there's, there's something, something wrong there somewhere. If you take the Cal Young on the back, there's four people for, oh, I forgot to sign a claim. Never, that's where the difference is. Thank you. Okay. So, you know, I...
I feel much more confident.
I was wondering what happened there. But, yeah, I, I do think, I do think geography does play a little bit of difference. Because generally speaking, you know, people are concerned about what's going on in their, their particular neighborhood. And a good example, I'll go back to this, this, this Christmas food, or the winter food drive that they did in, in the Harlow serves, where we did, total seventy-three, seventy-three children received meals. This was something that was generated specifically for that neighborhood, for the kids that live in that neighborhood and go to that school. So there, there is an interest in each part of, each part of not only the wards, but the neighborhood associations, and even the neighborhoods themselves. So I think geography should, should play into the selection process. I'm not saying it's got to be the number one factor. But I think it does need to go into it. And I also like the idea of giving the applicants a little bit of a head start on, on what they're expected to, to present to us.
Coaching.
Because that way, they can prepare. And maybe they find out something about what they've applied for that they don't really want to get involved in it. Or it makes them dig into it and really understand what the, what that position, you know, what you're gonna be called upon to do. So I do like that. That's kind of a, a nice add, addition to our process. But having it, the selection process all at the same time is also a very good idea.
Mike, and then Betty, and then Andrea.
Thank you, Mayor. I will grant you that when you look at the larger picture of boards and commissions as a whole, citywide, there is a little bit closer capacity for, for geographic representation, being more well, well-dispersed when you look at the entire picture of it. But there are some, some of our boards and commissions are more equal than others. Some of them have duties that are, are more... Some of them have duties that are, are more significant than are others. And certainly, what I brought up in the first place was the Budget Committee, that I would, I would say probably the, one of the more important committees in terms of deciding how the, how the council will spend the city's money. And so that was the one I was hoping we could get closer to a better representation of the entire community with in this next cycle. I, and along those lines, it occurred to me last time, and we never did have the discussion, so I'll ask the manager, I suppose, and the city attorney. The Board of County Commissioners has a Budget Committee process like we used to, that each of the members appoints one person to the Budget Committee in order to ensure a more equal distribution of folks that serve on that important committee. So what would be required of us? Would it be a, would it be an ordinance? What would be required for us to change our process to be one councillor appoints one Budget Committee member?
Do you know that?
Well, yes, we're confirmed with head nods. It would be, be an ordinance if, if you essentially wanted to revert to the previous where each one of you appoints someone from your ward or just appoint someone, then we'd, we'd come back with an ordinance similar, you know, to the way we've processed an ordinance to change some of the things around the Human Rights Commission. You would be changing some of the provisions around the Budget Committee.
So you'd need a vote from the council saying, "Please come back to us" with language of an ordinance to, to change that process. Is that correct?
Yeah, it would be sent for public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Andrea. I mean, Betty, sorry. Betty.
Geez.
I may want to do that.
Thank you. I wanted to talk about the way we do the interviews, but before that, I'll write that down so I won't forget it. Before that, I've always thought that maybe each of us should, it was probably better when each person appointed one, but were that, did they have to be from that person's ward when they did it? I don't think so.
Could be.
I don't remember.
I know when I appointed, my appointment to the Sustainability Commission was not from my ward, it was someone who was interested, who I thought was a good person. And I wouldn't, as I said, I don't think the geography is that important, but what I would do is look at the applicants and, and look at what they believe in and what their capabilities are, and appoint them on that basis. I think it would be too artificial to say, "You must find somebody in your ward to appoint." But the interviews, I wish that we could, instead of having set questions, which sometimes won't be enough, if we could, after they make a short statement, each of us could ask some question that's based on what they've said, or else on the written material we've looked at before. So it would be more meaningful for an individual rather than just a generic question. And I wonder if that's possible, if anyone else is interested.
Okay, Betty, you're through?
I'm through.
Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. So kind of along the thought of that, you know, that wasn't my question or my comment to Alan, but you know, when I first, when I first got involved, I think it may have been a year or two, Vicky Olner was the city manager, and they actually did an outreach to the Bethel area, and they did an open house to just have people, like, go around the room, they had all the boards set up, and kind of just chat about which each commission did. And I thought that was pretty helpful. I don't know what the numbers were, if they got people who were actually, you know, participated after that, but I, you know, I kind of tried to float an idea last year of something along the line of an open house somewhere in the community for people to kind of ask questions, because I think people come to us, and this does get to Alan's comment, but for Alan, I think people come to us with a different level of participation and a different level of experiences. And I believe that part of our role is to encourage people who maybe don't have those experiences, who aren't professional, who are just regular Joes and Jills, to get involved in government. And I think that that would be kind of a non-threatening way, you know, not filling out an application, not getting interviewed. I mean, when I first got on the Human Rights Commission, I've said this before, I was interviewed three times for, to be a Human Rights Commissioner. Every job I've had, it's been one interview. And some of them haven't been any interview, like, "Hey, you want to do it? Sure, go ahead." So, so I just think that we're, that sometimes our process is a little bit too process-oriented for some people and a little threatening. And so I don't know if anybody has any ideas around kind of doing an open house or something, and maybe in the areas where there's less participation, to try and encourage and give, and I give people ideas without being in that, without actually going through the process of applying, just to let them know what the, what the commission does, you know, what the goals are, what their roles are.
Okay. Alan, George, Chris, and Betty. Alan?
Yeah, like Betty, my, the one appointment that I have on the Sustainability Commission isn't from my ward, it's from a different ward. I don't know that that really played into my thinking so much as it was, who was the person and what would they contribute to this particular board. I think we have multiple goals and what we're trying to achieve in terms of the demographics. It's not only geography, it also includes, and we went through some of its gender, some of its age, some of its ethnicity. And, and I would hate to see us trump those other three for geography. And, and if we're going to do that, then I'm going to push to have those other ones included too, because I don't, I agree with what George said, it's not, may not be the number one thing, but it needs to be incorporated into it. So, so I don't want us to start to go down the road of having quotas of different types of diversity, but, but I do think we need to keep in mind all these different aspects of it, in terms of when we do these appointments. And I agree with you, Andrea. I think, you know, it's, when I said life experiences, life experiences can be anything from a job to a volunteer thing you've done before, or just your perspective about, you know, where you're coming from, which is, you know, for instance, young people don't have a lot of experience in that kind of way, so they, they don't have a lot to write down in terms of bullets, but they might have a really interesting perspective about it. So I think this, the format that we do doesn't really get at that for me. I think we need to think about that in a different way.
George?
Thank you. I'm pretty pleased with the, the way we do it, by and large. One thing I think I noticed during the, all of the interviews this last year was, sometimes applicants asked about, you know, they weren't sure what the time commitment was. And so maybe, I think maybe someone mentioned earlier, like, a little info packet, and that'd have to be this big thing of like, multi-page, just a paragraph, it's like, generally the, you know, this committee meets on this day every month, and the Planning Commission sometimes more than once, sometimes two or three times, generally for this amount of time per meeting, and then generally, if you don't have a huge background in this field, then you might be expected to spend five hours a month getting caught up and reading, reading old minutes from old meetings and kind of, you know, getting on, being able to get on board. I think that would be helpful to add that. And I don't know, I just, about the idea of just each councillor appointing a Budget Committee member, I feel like, you know, that's kind of already been done from each ward. I mean, we're the representatives from our wards. So the, all of the wards argue, do have equal representation on the Budget Committee. So I'm not sure, appointing, maybe we can have more discussion about that. I might change my mind. But I kind of like the idea of just interviewing from a wide pool and trying to pick who we think the best people are. So I'm not sure if I'd like to see that changed or not.
Chris?
Thanks. Three basic ideas. I had to write them down as they came up, but I'll start at the bottom and work up. First one, having to do with the interviews. There is a certain part of me that likes the notion of being able to ask whatever question I would want to ask, but I know from doing enough interviews with, with personnel and when you're hiring people, there's got to be a consistency in the questioning. So what I would probably be interested in talking about is giving them some guidance on their opening statement, let them say whatever they want to. Do have a set of questions that everyone get asked, so you at least have a point of comparison on the same questions with everybody. Then you might reserve a couple of minutes at the end for open question and answer, but I wouldn't make it the centerpiece of the interview process. I think there's got to be consistency between candidates, so we can have an apples-to-apples-to-apples comparison between candidates. The second point is around appointments and how that would work. And the thing that occurred to me was, what is the qualification basis for someone serving? I know within most of the statutes and ordinances that set up these committees, there's not really a job description per se. What there is, is you serve for this long, this is what your duties are, but there's not really a job description. So I say, if I want to hire somebody for a job and I don't have a job description, what are the qualifications that I'm hiring to? Is it an expertise qualification, a judgmental qualification? Is it a representative qualification? Is it a geographic? What are the qualifications? And maybe spending some time looking at each one of these commissions and saying, "What are the qualifications for someone to serve? Would that, would geography be an important qualification versus some other qualification?" I think, I think geography as an element of diversity is absolutely something we need to consider. Maybe not the first thing, but it is a criteria, it is a qualification. Which then leads me to my third point, which is the notion of, you can't force people to serve on boards and commissions. And no matter how much diversity we want, no matter how much, yeah, no matter how much we would like to have it be a certain way, you can't force that to happen. So we have to figure out a way to get people to want to serve on boards and commissions, and the term for that is how do we get people engaged, to want to be involved? And the caution is, most people get engaged, just like in the restaurant, because they're either happy or they're sad. They don't get engaged just because they woke up one morning and say, "I think I'll get involved." They get involved because something pushes them to get involved. And what I would not want us to do is to start filling up our boards and commissions with extremely happy people or extremely angry people. That's not the point of engagement and it's not the point of involvement. People become engaged because they have a wide variety of reasons. I'd like to study the mechanisms for how you get people engaged, without them having to be angry or happy or sad, or just everyday people, getting them engaged. What does it take to do that? So I think the interviews need consistency and a free element to them. I think the appointments need to really look at what are the qualifications that that particular board or commission has, and then what are mechanisms we can do to engage people without having to base it on extremes.
I guess the thing that I would add to that is you could have five applicants from a particular area and look at them and think, none of them are particularly good.
Possibly.
You could have one from another, and that could be not necessarily the one you want to choose either. It's.
I don't know.
It's an element.
I don't know.
All right, Betty.
Thank you. Andrea mentioned experience or knowing about these things. It brought up the thing I've been recommending for 15 years now, Government School, where we have each department take a week maybe and have citizens come and participate and learn about it. And once they've learned about a department, they may think, "Oh, there, I'd like to get involved in that somehow." And it also brought up another thing I keep saying. We used to have a citizen involvement committee, which is another way that people learned about government, and some people started out that way and later became more involved. I could probably name names if I took some time to think about it. Well, Bonnie Bateman was one, actually, who was on the citizen involvement committee before she ran for council. Neil Hyatt, who's no longer alive, even though he lives here.
Who was on that committee too?
But anywhere anymore. He got involved and became interested in government through that. And one way that we did, that we got the citizen involved in the committee was this blind calling people. And some people who would never have thought of it. By that, I served on that briefly, and some people who would never have thought about being involved in government, once they sat there with a group of people, neighborhood leaders, and I think there were a couple of councillors on at the time, and they started thinking, "Well, maybe I could do something." And they felt, started feeling important and involved is the word. So I think, but I think if we could do this, you could do it rather, we have a police academy still, don't we? And if we could just have something for planning and for budget and for everything, everything. As for the Budget Committee, I think sometimes we've made the mistake, or the group as a whole has made the mistake, thinking, "Oh, you're a banker, therefore you'd be good on budget." Well, that's, it's our staff that does the detailed work, the professionals, we don't, people can learn from being on the committee. And they can, I wouldn't want everybody who'd ever heard of a budget or never heard it, never knew anything about government, but through participation, they can learn. And it isn't as if, as if they are going to prepare the budget or do the figures or anything like that. I remember one applicant who had been really active in the League of Women Voters, which is a good training ground, that's where I started actually, but, who had done financial work there, and some people thought that was insignificant and chose instead someone who was from a bank. That's all. My time's up.
We're almost out of time. I think we've got Mike and Alan to wrap it up here.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I brought up the issue of geography is this. When Chris brings up the question about what are the qualifications for service on boards and commissions, that's to me a very important question. From my perspective, one of the most important things that the utility of having boards and commissions, the thing that's of value that those folks perform, isn't just the detail work that gets done prior to a decision being made at council. Staff is wonderful at that, as has been said. But what those folks do is bring the value system and the perspective of broader community to help us make decisions in our process. And what's important to me with geographic diversity is, and I'm obviously overgeneralizing, the mayor is correct, that you can have many people from one part of town and have all different kinds of opinions, but in a broad way. You have to admit that our community has areas of different types of values and opinions. And so for me, the issue of geographical diversity is one of making sure that everybody's heard at the table. I know, for example, I live in a cul-de-sac, and I'm the only Republican in the cul-de-sac at all, of all my neighbors, but I know that all my neighbors feel similarly about some of the issues we deal with, and that would be different than someone might feel in a different part of the community, in the, you know, south of the river or what have you. So I want to see us making sure that we're, we're not, we're not loading the deck, as it were, with one sort of point of view when it comes to the advice we're getting on boards and commissions, but that we have a good, equal set of hearings from everybody's values and opinions. Thank you.
Alan?
Yeah, I agree, Mike. I don't think geography equals point of view, though. I really like Chris's idea of a job description for the applicants to get information, just something short about some of the questions that we keep coming up, which is, you know, "How many hours? What do they do?" Those are the common questions that we get from folks. To respond to one thing Betty said, one of the best committees I ever worked with was completely randomly selected, and out of, out of a pool of rate pares for a job that I did. And they were great, and they were completely random. They were self-selected by, you know, applying, but then after that, they were completely randomly selected. And the one little process question or problem that I had was, when we do all of our interviews on one or two days, there have been several occasions where we've actually had people that weren't around. And that created a problem for our schedule and for, and for their schedule. You know, if they were gone for that week, you know, what happened? And maybe a way around that is to schedule most of them one week and then have, and have another session that has a couple of appointments the following week, so they're not all on the same two days. Because if you're out of town, you're probably out of town for more than one day and you're not available. So maybe we can get around that by doing a scheduling thing differently.
Okay. Anything else you need, Kelly? I mean, I don't know how much conclusion you come to.
No, I think we've got lots to work, Chris.
Okay.
Well, I, one thing we are doing differently this year is we've targeted two dates right off the bat, so people can put those on their calendars. We'll let people know, obviously, that they're tentative, but in the past, it's been, you know, they don't know anything until they get called for an interview. And so here, they will at least know, this is what we're looking at, so.
Good, that's helpful.
When they apply, you'll get that, right? Could be part of that job description.
We are finalizing the count of the vacancies that we have, and we'll get a supply of these brochures to everybody so that you.
Switch them out.
So before we leave today, just a reminder, several of you have already done it. If you haven't, you have a sheet in front of you where you can let, give it to Beth to let us know what you'd like to be assigned to yourselves. So if you can do that and get it to Beth, the sooner I can get the process going to make those, make those appointments.
Can't say where we want our people to be assigned.
Yeah, right. Try.
I have some thoughts on that.
You've been sentenced to the Budget Committee.
I have some thoughts.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Good to speak to you.